The third meeting of the 23rd Council will please come to order. We will have a moment of silence, and during the moment of silence, I'd like to keep in our thoughts the Honorable Judge Rosier Sanchez, who passed away on December the 22nd, and was a real advocate for the poor and the needy in our community, and also Rosemary Sanchez, who attended many city council meetings here, and was a very strong advocate for the disabled. And after that moment of silence, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Counselor Davis.
Thank you. (inaudible). The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and one God, indivisible, with every single justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Davis. Can you hear me there? Is the mic...
(inaudible).
Okay. Didn't seem like the mic was working. Civic Plaza parking passes are provided for members of the public. You can obtain a parking pass at the council signup table. The council will take a dinner break at approximately 7:00 PM this evening. We want tonight's proceedings to be as civil and respectful as possible. Please do not make any personal attacks, and please no applies or other outbursts during the meeting. The meeting will go a lot smoother if we are respectful of one another. The next item is proclamations and presentations. There are none this evening. There is no economic development discussion this evening. That is item four. And the next item on the agenda is administrative question and answer period. Are there any questions for the administration? But there is no one from the administration here this evening.
(laughing) I know.
We will go ahead and pass on that. If necessary, we can come back to that item. Counselor...
Yes, might we ask someone, if anyone's listening upstairs, if administration is going to attend our meetings, or is...what's going on?
Mr. President, I spoke with Ms. Nyir, CAO. She said they're on their way and finishing up some business upstairs.
Okay, that's fine. We can always go back if there are any questions for the administration.
And it isn't only 5:04, so it's...we got started right on time.
The next item on the agenda is item six. That is the Journal. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the December 18th Journal.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the December 18th Journal. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Next item is item seven, communications and introductions. Are there any questions? Are there any changes to the letter of introduction? Counselor Penyo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing R-3 and placing it on the January 17th council agenda for final action. R-3 is expressing the city's support for the proposed Trisco West Route 66 Main Street organization.
We have a motion and a second to place R-3 on the January 17th meeting. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed, say no. That passes unanimously. Next item is I move the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing OC-2 and placing it on the January 17th council agenda for final action. OC-2 is the reappointment of Mr. Leonard Waits to the police oversight board. We have a motion and a second by Council Vice President Harris. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed, say no. That passes unanimously. We move that the rules be suspended for the purpose of introducing OC-3 and placing it on the January 17th council agenda for final action. OC-3 is the reappointment of Mr. Johnny JR Mijo to the police oversight board. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? See none, all those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, opposed, say no. That passes unanimously. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for approval of the letter of introduction.
We have a...
Mr. President.
Counselor Benton.
If I could, I just had a question about one item on the letter of introduction under introductions. Item A 018-2, this is Counselor Jones's bill on drainage ordinance, and I just...I saw that it was referred to the FGO committee, and I was under the impression that this is primarily related to land development, and should this not be referred to the LUPs committee? Just a question.
That's a good question.
Counselor Jones.
That is a good question, Counselor, and I don't know why it went to FGO. I assume that was an executive decision.
(inaudible). I don't know either. But if you want a chance to revoke, I think that would serve the...
I would indeed like to change the referral to LUPs.
Okay.
If that's acceptable to you, Mr. President, yes.
That's fine.
So with that one change.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the approval of the letter of introduction, excluding that one change. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, those opposed, say no. That passes unanimously. We have no reports of committee. The next item is the deferral and withdrawal items. Are there any changes or withdrawals at this time? There is none. Let's go and move on to the consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Yes, all those opposed, say no. That passes unanimously. We are now under general public comments. There will be a two-minute time limit. The light at the podium will be green for the first minute and a half, then the bell will ring and the light will turn yellow, indicating you have 30 seconds remaining to wrap up your comments. At the two-minute time, the bell will turn red, meaning your time has expired. The first speaker under general public comments, and I will call the first four names, and once your name has been called, please come to the front and be prepared to speak. Don Schrader, Laura Dale, Elizabeth DeCary, and Leonard Waits. Welcome.
I lived well all of 2017 on $5,528 for my total expenses, rent, food, et cetera. Less than half the U.S. poverty level for me as a single person. I enjoy living simply. Less spoiled, less bills, less stress, more freedom. I refuse to be a slave to ads, commercials, and corporations. How much worse the environment and climate chaos would be if all 7 billion people on Earth consumed, traveled, polluted, and ate meat and dairy like most USAans? Why hog more than my fair share in our world family? Freedom is not having and not wanting much stuff I do not need. I enjoy having enough. One sunny room to live in, healthy food, warm clothes for cold weather, a garden for food and flowers. My time is more precious than millions of dollars, my friendships more precious than mansions full of expensive crap. Why have much more than I need while many millions have far less than they need? Booze, junk food, cocaine, meth, sugar, heroin, sodas, cigarettes, all are terrible addictions. But no addiction is more harmful than craving much more money, much more stuff than we need.
Thank you. Next speaker, Laura Dale. Welcome.
I was gonna try and play Rosemary's final statement about this. I don't know...can I wait till we work out the technicalities, or should I...
That's not a problem. You can wait. We'll call you up. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth DeSherry, and first of all, I would like to thank the mayor and the mayor's office for publicly opposing a coyote-killing contest that happened this past weekend. And I also, to that end, would like to thank the city of Albuquerque for strictly enforcing the violation...any violations of ordinances pertaining to these competitions. I have with me an article in the Albuquerque Journal that was published on Saturday, so we're all so thankful to the Journal. And I do want to make an update as to what happened. I've been involved with trying to end wildlife-killing contests for...since 2012. But as an update, this contest did happen. It was organized out of Albuquerque, but as far as we can tell, the dead coyotes were not brought into Bernalillo County. The checking appears to have been in Torrance County, and given what was publicly posted on social media, we believe about 55 to 65 coyotes were killed. We hope the city council will pass a resolution opposing these contests, and along with that, a resolution supporting state legislation to ban coyote-killing contests statewide. Again, thank you very much, and I'm very grateful for what everyone has done.
Ms. DeSherry, thank you for your time. Leonard Waits, followed by Brenda McKenna, followed by Tad Neminski. Welcome.
Good evening, Counsel Sanchez, members of the council. My name is Leonard Waits. I am the executive director of the Martin Luther King Commission, State Commission. First, I want to personally thank Counselor Benton for attending our 27th Kirtland Edition Shriners Christmas Parade a couple of weeks ago. It was attended by at least 200 kids. We had a great time. We had Santa Claus there, and we had plenty of food and presents for the kids. The second thing I want to talk about is the...I want to invite you all to the Martin Luther King Parade that we're having January 13th, beginning at 11 o'clock. The parade will begin...the parade will begin on the northeast corner of UNM campus and end across the street, across the bridge at the Civic Plaza, and we'll have a brief commemoration ceremony during that time. Again, I'd like to invite the whole council, if you would. The last thing, but not the least, is I also want to invite you to our second Martin Luther King...Martin Luther King State Commission Trek Meet, indoor track meet, which is January the 20th. The indoor track meet is the brainchild of Joe Padrell, Clarence Smith, Mayor Berry, and our own Brad Winters, and...who is one of our city councilmen's. The event is sponsored by UNM Lobos and the City of Albuquerque Parks and Recreation Department. We expect over two...from 200 to 300 participates in that event. Again, thank you, and I hope you all have a prosperous year.
Thank you, Mr. Waits.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Brenda McKenna. Welcome.
Good evening, President, and Happy New Year to you and to all the counselors. I attended the last city council meeting in December on the 18th, and I discussed with you about the coyote-killing contest that was planned by a firearms dealer here in Albuquerque. I want to thank Counselor Davis for bringing the attention to the mayor's staff because Mr. Isaac Pithia was very responsive and assisted us with a letter through the mayor's office, and it was sent to the firearms dealer. Nonetheless, the coyote-killing contest did occur, as Elizabeth mentioned to you previously. In light of this, it's all the more reason that I sincerely ask that this body consider a resolution condemning this behavior, which will also support future state legislation to outlaw this statewide. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the last speaker under general public comments will be Tad Neminski.
In my...
You're next.
Thank you. My name's Ted...my name's Ted Neminski. This is loud as can we get?
Do we have a technician looking at this problem?
Mr. President, I'm not sure what's going on. We passed the pre-meeting check, and the microphones were working just fine. I'm informed that Gov. 16 is hearing us just fine, and so we're going out and broadcast. Mr. Lefkowitz, our engineer, is on his way down to check this out, so hopefully soon.
Go ahead and proceed.
Again, my name's Ted Neminski. Well, that's not new approach to corruption by...approach to corruption by politicians. City Council. That's all they have to do when they're voting for own projects, for example, Clarice Chapina to YDI, Winter to his wife, contract Benton to nonprofit developers. They don't even have to leave at a chamber. Oh, yes, they don't have to say yes. All other eight say yes for them. Time for indictment. Time to look at...that is all tricked by the city council. They can change it anytime they want it, their own charter. Now, it is America where homeless veterans and ex-executive sleep under the bridges. Well...now, millions of dollars being diverted by...approved by City Council to YDI, St. Martin's, Clinic for Homeless, of course Catholic charity, building apartments, who's housing illegal immigrants, and also giving them jobs. All construction jobs are taken by illegal. That's a true picture.
I'm speaking on behalf of Rosemary. She did pass. She had a stroke on the week before the 23rd. She was in the hospital. She was doing all right, and then she did some exercise and didn't feel well, went to her room, had a stroke, and passed on the 23rd. She is the reason that I have fought so hard about public access, her and Nani, and it's really hard to be here without her. But I'm sick and tired of BS that has gone on for five years now with you people not looking into this. Millions of dollars have gone into Rick Metz, who has produced less than 10 hours of actual programming. He gets $30,000 a month. He rents out all the fancy, expensive, millions-of-dollars-equipment he bought to the film industry, so it's a for-profit entity, even though he masquerades as a nonprofit. My second concern for the council is the Public Access Fund, which is a 44 cent tax, has not been going to a robust public access service. You folks are in serious million-dollar lawsuit trouble if the cable subscribers decided to sue you for misuse of their funds. So I would like some kind of transparency and accountability. I have zero trust that you folks are going to handle this new RFP process properly, because I haven't heard anything about it. Now granted, we've had the holidays and stuff, but I need massive accountability. I don't care who gets the contract, but I don't want the same thing to happen again. I don't want Rosemary up there feeling like she can't rest in peace because you people aren't doing your jobs. So I need to know what is going on right now. I need to know what's happening for the public, who is paying upwards of...the RFP, the PEG Fund, had to last account something like $12 million in it that has not gone to programming at all. What is happening? For Rosemary's sake, at least. Can I get an answer at all?
Counselor Davis has a question.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Nyir, I know at our last council meeting, we discussed this, and I know the current, if I recall it right, the current contract for our public access expired at the end of the year. The administration was working on some bridges to allow them to continue until a new RFP could be put out. Can you give us an update on that, or has the administration, new administration, had a chance to look at that process and give us an update on that?
Absolutely, Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Davis. We actually just met today about the formulation of the RFP for the public access contract, and two of the things that we're looking at are putting in more detailed requirements on what exactly local programming means, and also just making sure that there are the right internal controls and accountability placed within that RFP, so that when we're looking at the different vendors, we know that they are planning to be accountable for the programming. Until the new vendor is selected, the old contract does continue on a month-to-month basis, but we'll try to move that RFP process along as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Nyir.
I just have one more question. One of the things that concerns me is, again, along the lines of the misuse of public funds, the public...so the cable subscribers have been paying 44 cents since Rick Metz took that contract. We did an audit back in 2010 that showed at least $6 million in that fund. So let's just say it's doubled. It may have quintupled. I don't know. There's no accountability, even though it's public money. So my question is, I know Rick Metz bought a TriCaster for $30,000 that even some of our biggest news stations don't have.
Ms. Dale, we can get back to you on that. Basically, you know, we're not answering questions here today, but I have myself have a question for Ms. Nyir in the statement that was just made regarding formulating a contract for a new contract, because I was told by the previous administration, and that's why we allowed for the extension to continue with you public, is that there was basically complete, and it was going to go out for RFP. Where is it set, and how much longer is it going to take?
Counsel President Sanchez, I can't speak for the previous administration, but an RFP has been drafted, and Legal came to meet with us today because they had worked it through on Legal, and it's ready for executive review now, so...
Counselor Benton.
And is there still a lawsuit that we're dealing with on this? That was also a regular reason given by the previous administration for not having advanced the RFP.
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Benton, yes, there is still a lawsuit related to a protest on the award of the last contract.
And is that, I mean, is that a reason to not proceed with the new RFP?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Benton, not at this time. We don't see any concern with proceeding.
Yeah. So just to be really clear, this council doesn't issue RFPs. We don't operate the administration and so forth, so all impressions that might be given to the contrary are incorrect. And yes, I am hopeful with the new administration that we can move this forward. It seemed like under the previous administration, there was always some reason why it was not moving forward, so...
Can I just make one last thing, and I will get out of here.
Ma'am, your time has expired.
I just...can we get an external audit of the funds?
If you want to send that in writing, but your time...
Can we get an external audit of the funds and the equipment that's been purchased with the public's monies?
Your time is expired. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
All right.
Okay, let's go back to questions and answers for the administration. Are there any questions for the administration? Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Rayal, I know you and I were...had got a chance to very briefly speak about this, but I hope you can help us get an update. We noticed over the holidays, in fact, the IDO, public input and training session process, a number of those meetings have been planned over the next couple of months for the various community planning agencies or areas, excuse me, the various neighborhoods, including some that were set to start in a couple of weeks. And it's my understanding, and I know we got copies of them, that about 10,000 subscribers had received a notice from the city back on December 22nd outlining the dates of those meetings. And it's my understanding now that over the holiday, perhaps, the administration had put a notice on the website that they didn't intend to have those meetings, but we haven't made notice to the folks. Can you give us an update on the administration's plans for those public training and input processes on the IDO? I know time matters here, because the bill has a deadline, and I know that folks in different neighborhoods were planning on attending those, and had already begun the process for those.
Mr. President and Counselor Davis, that is correct. We have, again, wow, this is loud and loud. Hello there. The issue is that the mayor really had not had an opportunity to get a complete thorough briefing on the IDO itself and from the staff, number one. Number two is that we had wanted to ensure that we, as an administration, understood what these meetings were about and how they were put together, et cetera. So we fully intend to move forward on the meetings at some point, but our interest was more getting ourselves, our arms around the issues associated with the IDO, making sure that we knew what was being presented to the neighborhoods and the community out there, and then coming back and having a conversation on the presentations going forward. So I understand that notifications for our conversation earlier have already been sent out, and that's an unfortunate maybe disconnect between...my assumption is that those notifications were sent out to the Office of Neighborhood Services that is in the council. Is that accurate?
I believe they came out of the Planning Department.
Okay. Well, in either case, we will make sure that we get back the notices to folks, that we will, as soon as we get the briefing and understanding of the issues, we'll restructure the meeting so we can go forward.
Mr. President, if I can follow...
Go ahead and proceed.
Mr. Rayal, thank you. I appreciate that. I certainly understand taking on all this new stuff and everything that's happening, but the administration is not the only folks involved in this planning process. It's been a cooperative venture between the council and the planning process, the outside vendor, more than 200 neighborhood associations, these community planning areas, and the six-month process was deliberately designed on a pretty tight timeline in order to get these trainings done and to have those other ones. I think the concern is that canceling those or moving the whole schedule out forces us to get to a place where we end up in some of those questions about the IDO and what rules will be in place, by what time, that's really concerning. I wonder, again, you know, 10,000 folks on the subscriber list have gotten that notice and said there's going to be a public meeting, and I'm concerned about folks who now look at this and say, oh, this sort of validates the concern that they were going to lock us out of this process. So I wonder if there's any way the administration might be willing to reconsider or take a look at that planning process as quickly as possible and see if they could still accommodate those meetings. The next one's actually not until the 18th, so we've got a couple of weeks, but I know this, it's not just the administration that went into those planning. It really is the neighborhood associations who have to get members there. They have to have their own meetings to appoint members to go to these meetings, and so they have a process that goes with this as well. I know the challenge. I appreciate the consideration. I wonder if we'd be willing to take a new look at that and hope that we can check...
Mr. President and Counselor Davis and members of the council, I will certainly visit with the mayor, and we'll get back with you on that. Thank you.
Counselor Winter, then Counselor Benton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two questions. Mr. Rayal, could you find out for me when the construction for the next phase of North Domingo Baca Multi-Generational Center is going to start? I think all the money is there.
Mr. President, Counselor, I will look into that and get some information too.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question is, when I look out there, I see it looks pretty bleak as far as director. How's the process going to hire new directors for the departments?
Counsel President Sanchez, Counselor Winter, it's going, and we have acting directors in all the departments, so there's not any...there aren't any rudderless or captainless ships out there, but, you know, this is an important process. We want to make sure we take our time and do it right.
Counselor Benton, and then Counselor Borrego.
Just to follow up with Counselor Davis's question, we do, I mean, there have, of course, been some transition and some change, of course, at the Planning Department, but we do have, I think, all of the key staff that worked on this, both in the city council and in the Planning Department, available, so I would just offer our staff to help in any way possible with downloading some of the processes, processes that have been laid out, including this training process, and it's an important process and promise that was made to the neighborhoods, some of which, you know, did have reservations about the IDO, and we certainly want to, I think it's in everyone's interest that that process moved forward, and we hold our commitments. Thank you.
Counselor Borrego.
I'd like to thank Counselor Davis for bringing this issue to bear. I spoke to Counselor Sanchez this afternoon about my concern with the timing. The timing, actually, there's already two months that have gone by, and there's only really six months in this process, so, you know, we may have to look at what the administration and the council can agree on down the line. I think that, you know, there is a, you know, a schedule that was promised to the community, and if we're not following that schedule, then, you know, we really need to try to be more in line, and also just look to what do we...how do we make up those...that lost time, because this is an issue that affects the entire community, and not only the business community, but the neighborhood community. And I know that there are people that have, you know, expressed a lack of trust for the process, and I think that this just adds to that. In addition to that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to just mention that I'd like the...I've asked Mr. Rayal to look into the issue of the... Mr. Rayal to look into the issue of the Northwest Area Command substation, which has some severe cracks in it, and I know that you're looking into that process for us.
Mr. President and members of the council, on your first point, I just want to reiterate to you all of you, many of you have been here for some time as elected officials. The mayor, obviously, just began his term, so I think you all can fully appreciate his interest and desire to understand the IDO process and, and what you all and, and the previous administration had begun. So I think the issue here is just give us an opportunity to get up to speed on the issue, and I appreciate Counselor Benton's, you know, request or information that the staff at the council could also be helpful. We may take you up on that offer. So again, it's not an issue associated with not necessarily wanting to do this. It's more a question of making sure that he's had a very short transition period, you know, in a month, he really began to structure government, as the question previously was asked about department heads, still working on all those issues, so, so if you would just bear with us on that issue. And Counselor Borrego, just to give you an update, the, we have had a structural engineer now review the facility. You asked for an opportunity to go visit, and we will schedule that for you here very shortly. The good news is that the structural engineers rented the facility safe for use. It's actually open now, and, and the police department is using the facility, et cetera. We may need to do some work to shore up some of the issues associated with, with drainage issues that may have been the cause of the, of the structural elements, and so we'll be moving forward with getting more information for you and giving you a better perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Penya, then Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know this is irrelevant now, but I had introduced a resolution to, to delay the process for a year, because I thought with the new administration coming in, and just, there was just so much in terms of the meetings and stuff, so, you know, I, I appreciate that you really want to dive into it. I think that it was an important process, and as people know, that, you know, people, there's a lot of folks that didn't really wrap their arms around the IDO as, as a whole, and I just thought, really, the training and, and all that it would require would take some additional time, so, you know, I would just like to say that, that was obviously voted down, and it's going to take, the timeline is supposed to be six months, so out of respect for the community, and as Counselor Borrego stated, it's already been kind of two months into the process, so maybe we should kind of reformalize, and maybe not a year, but give it six months from now or something like that, but with the idea that I think that some of the meetings, you know, should continue and should, should, we should have them, because there's a lot of folks who are very interested in the process and making sure that the training happens. I know that some folks from the City Council services have actually, you know, worked real hard and real diligent to make sure that they adhere to their timelines, so I'm sure that they would be open to having a little bit of flexibility as well, so, thank you.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, and at the risk of beating this dead horse a little bit longer, we need to go beyond saying this has been a very short transition period. Yes, it is, but you knew from the beginning it was going to be a very short transition period. This is an extremely important piece of legislation, took multiple years to make it happen, and I would like to know from the administration, hopefully within the next few days, when you expect to reschedule these, not just, "We're looking at it, we need to be briefed." You need to be briefed, and you need to do it quickly. This is a piece of ordinance, a legislation the City Council passed with deadlines on it, and we would like to see when you are planning on starting these meetings, since you have canceled them. And I think that it's appropriate that the public gets to know a date by which that's going to happen, not just that it's going to take a little while.
Mr. Rayal.
Mr. President and Counselor, we will get a date for you within the next couple of days.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moving on to a lighter topic, I just want to extend a, given all the challenges that are happening, I just want to extend a personal appreciation to Mr. Williams and the planning staff, Mr. Soliday and the Solid Waste staff. We received a complaint over the holidays about a dump location on Wyoming in the Southeast Heights that caused some environmental health concerns, some community trash concerns, and even over the holidays, Mr. Soliday, Mr. Williams coordinated a plan. Mr. Williams was able to send a code enforcement officer out the very next day, meet with the owners, deliver a plan, come up with a solution, cite them for their violations, and to get them into compliance. It was a huge improvement and a huge relief to the residents who were living next to a whole bunch of extra trash and all kind of environmental problems that could have lingered for a while. I just want to, when we do something well, be sure we reach out to say thank you, and I want to say thank you to them for that work. Thank you.
And I have a question for the administration. Mr. Rayal, I know you've been riding the art buses, and there's been some issues that have come up that, you know, people have come to me regarding the alignment of the lighting and the lanes, and when is the operation going to take? When will we be in full operation of the art buses? Do we have a date? Because people are asking that question.
Mr. President and members of the council, we are, as you know, we are actively, as the mayor says, doing a deep dive into the entire project, everything from the construction of the program to the systems associated with operating art, to the equipment, et cetera. I wish I could give you a date, a definitive date at this moment. We have met with the contractors and with a number of people associated, including the, some of the folks that were involved in the procurement, to look at the entire program. It is suffice to say that there are some issues that require us to, to do some modifications. We're having the contractors put together that list of, of concerns and, and having conversations with them, and so within the next few days, we hope that we can give the mayor a thorough briefing on, on where things are, and obviously, report back to you and the council as to how we are going to proceed moving forward, but I don't have a date for you at this very moment, but we'll certainly try and get to you as soon as possible.
Will those concerns be resolved before the buses start to operate?
Mr. President, well, they absolutely have to be resolved as it relates to the operations of the buses, because they are such that they obviously impact how the buses operate in the corridor, and, and so we're, that's part of the, the overall review that we're doing with the contractors, to ensure that the construction meets the needs of, of the public, but also that the buses can operate safely within the, the structures that were built, and that we have a system that's, that's, obviously, that works for everybody.
And what about the alignment with the lights in the lanes? You've got problems on Rio Grande, you've got problems on Coors, you know, people don't know where to go to stop, to make a left turn, to go straight. That seems to be a real serious problem.
No question about that, Mr. President, members of the council. There's obviously a huge education program as it relates just to drivers, and, but there's also some real structural issues that we have to do on that corridor to ensure that pedestrians and drivers are safe, and that the buses can, can traverse the corridor appropriately, right? Right now, that's part of the overall review that we're doing, to ensure that, that that, that those, those accidents, if you will, that, that people perceive might happen, or those, those confusion, the confusion that's out there, because we don't have buses operating in the middle of the median in the city of Albuquerque at this point. So we're working through all of those, and we'll, we'll get you a complete report here as we move through the process.
Counselor Penya.
I was just going to do a follow-up to that. I was actually going to call you tomorrow to see if we could go down there, especially at Atchisco and Central. It really, when you're driving, it actually looks like you're, so people, there've been accidents, and every time you're there, it's kind of that person just thinks to go straight, and so I think all we need is like a few white dots that kind of indicate that you go that way, and I think when the sun is setting, because the road, it's just a strange dynamic, so I'm actually kind of concerned that there's going to be a serious accident there, so I was going to call you tomorrow, just as a follow-up.
Mr. President and Counselor Penya, ironically, that was one of the solutions that we talked about as well, is, is creating those little dotted lines so that people know where, where they're supposed to be, and the buses know where they're supposed to be. I just suffice to say to you all that, that there are some challenges that we're working through, and, and we'll get you a, a report as soon as we finish that review.
Are there any other questions? Counselor Harris.
While we're on the ART, I assume that the answer hasn't changed, but is there any update on the agreement with the federal government, the full funding agreement?
Mr. President, Counselor Harris, no, the, there still has not been a signed agreement with the Federal Transit Administration as it relates to the, the project. We are scheduled to have what's called a, I think, a monthly conversation with the, with the FTA staff here in January to, again, begin to, obviously, describe the process and where we are in the progress of the program, and to begin to, the mayor's direction to me is that we need to insist upon having the FTA move forward with signing this contract so that we can ensure ourselves that we're going to get reimbursed for the expenses. And obviously, the other piece of this is what happens at the national level with the budget, and the budget needs to obviously be voted on Congress, so that that way the FTA has the funds available to distribute the money to, to the city of Albuquerque, but no, the agreement has not been signed at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for the administration? Seeing none, let's move on to item 11, announcements. Counselor Penya.
Thank you, Mr. President. There will be a Finance and Government Operations Committee meeting on Monday, January 8th, at 5:00 PM in the council committee room on the ninth floor.
And then Counselor Borrego, she isn't in, so I will read this. There will be a Land Use Planning and Zoning Committee meeting on Wednesday, January the 10th, at 5:00 PM in the council committee room on the ninth floor. We are now under public hearings, and this is AC 17-14, Hesintma, agent for the San Jose Neighborhood Association, appeals the decision of the Environmental Planning Commission. Mr. Melendez, do you want to please explain this appeal?
Thank you, Mr. President, counselors. This is an appeal of the EPC. The request at this particular site is for a zone change from SU2 for mixed-use residential to SU2 for limited commercial retail. This is, property is located within the South Broadway Neighborhood Sector Development Plan area. The request was approved by the Environmental Planning Commission to, to do the zone change at the request of a community dental office within that area. The community dental office is located next to the site in question, and the dental office represented that they wanted to use this particular property to expand parking for the dental office and to provide access to William Street, where the current access is from Hinkle. Apparently, there's some issues with an easement that connects them to Hinkle. On appeal, the land use hearing officer found some errors in what the EPC did with respect to its findings and considerations. Specifically, it identified that, Lajo identified that several highly relevant policies were overlooked by the EPC relating to the protection of residential land uses, and with policies related to areas of consistency in the comprehensive plan. In this instance, the EPC made its decision based on the justification that the Zone Map Amendment was more advantageous to the community, as articulated by the comprehensive plan, yet the Lajo identified some relevant policies that were not considered. In addition, the EPC made findings relative to the harm that may result from some of the uses permissive within that zone, and it relied on a decision from the zoning hearing examiner that had actually been vacated by the Environmental Planning Commission, and it actually neglected to do its own evaluation of harm, and so the Lajo identified error with that. Finally, the EPC had a lot of discussion at their hearing about whether or not some other zone would be possible to accommodate the parking and access that wouldn't also permit so many other uses, including some commercial uses and multifamily, and the Lajo identified that the sector plan at issue would have permitted a more limited parking zone, but that the EPC was given some information that was, was not completely accurate, or that, that was not good in describing what was possible within the sector plan for their considerate, ultimate consideration. For those reasons, the land use hearing officer is recommending that this matter be remanded to the EPC for it to address the deficiencies in its findings and for it to consider information about what zoning options are available at the site. This matter is before you tonight for acceptance or rejection of the recommendation of your land use hearing officer. You won't hear from the party tonight. If you have questions about this matter, I'll do my best to try to address them based on the information in the record. If I cannot, then the council may reject the recommendation and schedule this for a full hearing in a couple of weeks.
Mr. President.
Counselor Benton, and then Counselor Jones.
Mr. Melendez, so just, I did read through the, the transcript of the, of the EPC hearing, and specifically the part about alternative zone, zoning applications as opposed to the one that was applied for. First of all, though, it's correct that the, the property owner built parking on these sites without a permit.
Mr. President, that's correct.
So this was, this was an attempt to remedy that problem, because they were cited for that unpermitted construction that was made on the property.
Correct.
And then, I think, once they saw that they needed to do something about that, according to the record, they met with the planning review team of the Planning Department, which actually recommended this zone to them.
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, that's correct.
So, just one more thing, because you know me, I'm always asking about what the procedure was to got us to where we are here today. Then there was this procedural question that the planning commissioners were asking about, isn't there a better choice than this very broad zone change that would allow multifamily housing, which had just been recently a controversy, and, and before the zoning hearing examiner, was, was finally dropped by a different applicant that wanted to build on that site, and it was very clear, there was a lot of opposition from the neighborhood for that particular project, which just, that was part of the history, right, and, and part of the, I guess, confusion about what options the planning commission had. But in reading that transcript, I was, I was concerned, not only that, that there's some incorrect information given as to whether there was such an option of going to a parking zone as, as opposed to a, a more broad zone that allowed multifamily housing, but also I, I had the impression in reading that, and I can't get it up on my iPad right now, but, but I got the impression from reading that this weekend was that, that also the, the EPC's attorney, and I think I mentioned this to you, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it this afternoon, but there seemed to be some confusion and possibly some misdirection from the attorney to the planning commission, saying that, that that was not an option, and that for, for that different zone to be brought up, that they would have to deny this application, and then have the applicant apply for the other zone, the parking zone. And so that confused me when I read the Lajo's opinion, and, and it sounds like what the Lajo is saying is, yes, go back, look at it again, look at this, this option of a parking zone as opposed to this other zone.
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, yes, that, that particular discussion was very well-developed before the EPC. Many of the members of the EPC engaged in that, and you're, you're correct. Essentially, page 43, Z1 and Z2, and 43 W through Z contain that discussion, and I'll try to, to do my best to kind of make some sense of what, the way that I think it, it transpired in my review just before the meeting. And essentially, it appeared that the EPC members were struggling with what zoning options were available at the site. The question was initially presented to their legal counsel. Can we consider a different zone at this site, was the question as I read it to their legal counsel. The, the response back, which, which I think is, is relatable, is to sort of guide the EPC back to the question before them, and the response was, "You have to consider the zone that's being requested, and you cannot make the applicant request a different zone." And, and as that discussion proceeded, the, the legal counsel did advise the EPC that they could ask staff whether some other zone would be possible at this location to accommodate parking. And in response, planning staff responded somewhat, I guess, equivocally, to the best of my understanding, was a statement, is that a P-zone would not be permitted. The Lajo identified otherwise, and given the amount of time and research opportunity that the Lajo has, the Lajo identified within the sector plan that that would have been a permissive option. So it was quite a, a long and sort of belabored discussion. It seemed that legal, the legal advice they got was simply that you have to request the, the request before you. That doesn't mean that the applicant couldn't have requested something different. In fact, that happens, and the zoning ordinance, as it says today, contemplates that that could happen, to where something less intensive than, than is being requested could be approved, and this council has done that in the past, in reliance on that language in the zoning code.
So, Mr. President, so from, from what I heard you say, they, EPC did have the authority to not just ask about that alternative zone, but to suggest it as a... to not just ask about that alternative zone, but to suggest it as a remedy to the situation?
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, I think it is a little bit of a nuance because, you know, they, you can't sort of hold somebody over barrel and say, we're going to deny you unless you request a different zone. However, the discussion, without getting to that point, could sort of hopefully elucidate for the applicant that this thing's going to go down unless, you know, something more palatable is presented. And so, that would be the option for the EPC to sort of have that discussion. And if the applicant is willing and interested in pursuing that route, it would be incumbent upon the applicant at that point to make that request for the amendment.
To, to weigh in at that time, once that was being discussed, to raise their hand, essentially.
Mr. President, Counselor Benton, that's correct.
Okay. And, and the only other thing that threw me then was Commissioner Gonzalez asked the question, well, would this mean, I mean, if it were the case that we would have to deny it, then that would mean the applicant would have to wait for 12 months before they could reapply? And the answer was yes.
Mr. President, Counselor Benton?
Anyway, I, you know, we have so many of these breakdowns that occur and it's disconcerting. But I did understand the Luhho is clearly giving us that route if we were to go along with their, with the Luhho's findings and recommendation that would clearly, if this were remanded, it would make it clear that that is on the table for the EPC to discuss and to, for the applicant and the appellant to be aware of. So, with that, I'm going to just go ahead and move, Mr. President, that we accept the Luhho's recommendation and findings.
We have a motion and a second by Counselor Jones to accept the findings and recommendations of Luhho. I think there was a question by Counselor Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to say a lot of what I heard Counselor Benton say. This was a, was a really complicated appeal to read through. But at the end of it, when I stopped reading, it was, you know, the fact that, that they did not, they, meaning the EPC, did not look for other possible cures or solutions, you know, really took precedence for me. So, I think we should allow the EPC to have another crack at it and let them finish up their work and see what happens that, that time. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, there, Counsel, Counselor Borego.
Mr. Chair, having only sat in on this for my first time, but I did write the sector plan, by the way, and I do fully understand the zoning. And I think by remanding it back to the planning commission, the applicant could actually even withdraw their case and, and wouldn't have to wait the 12 months. Is that correct?
Mr. President, Counselor Borego, I think that they would have a couple of options. One, that you've clearly articulated, withdraw, reapply. The other would be to amend the request.
So, they could amend it or they could withdraw and, and they could, they could file immediately. I mean, they wouldn't have to wait the 12 months.
Mr. President, Counselor Borego, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second on the floor to remand this back to the EPC. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed? That carries unanimously. We are now under item 14, final actions. This is item A, Counselor Benton, R-249.
Thank you, Mr. President. R-249 is related capital projects and amended adopted capital implementation projects city of Albuquerque to provide funding for a certain District 2 road projects. I move a do-pass.
We have a motion and a second by Council Vice President Harris, and we have one individual signed up to speak, Charles Salas. Welcome, Mr. Salas.
Good evening, Mr. President, Counselors. I was here to talk about a certain, the lights on Walter on lead and coal. They did study not too long ago and they said that they wanted to put lights on Walter, but your department head of the municipal department stated herself that a light was not warranted on that intersection. We talked about Edith, a light wasn't warranted on that intersection either. City council decided they still wanted to put a light there anyway because some, some people in the neighborhood feel it is necessary. If it is necessary, I think the study should be redone because it was done in the peak of the art project when everybody was on the one-way. Everybody was trying to get to where they were going, speeding, and, and I live right in the corner, I see it. I see traffic two times the first thing in the morning and rush hour. During the day, there's nothing, all night long, there is nothing. It would be a waste of city money to put a light on that intersection even when your department heads state that it is not necessary. In the future, if a light is necessary, in the last meeting I stated Edith because all lights are on Edith to keep the traffic going. Edith is, was made wide enough to accommodate two vehicles. Walter isn't. You know, and also on Edith, it has the crosswalks for the children, for Eugene Field. If you go to Edith, all the lights on Edith from North Valley all the way to Gibson, they're all on Edith with the crosswalks, which would make it much safer for the children and your crosswalk guards, much, it'll make it safer for the children, it would make it easier for them, plus it would help the traffic itself get across the one-ways.
Thank you, Mr. Salas.
Thank you very much.
We are back in the bill. Are there any questions by this council? Seeing none, Counselor Benton to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to, to address Mr. Salas's concern, as he stated, we, the previous council did pass a, a bill calling for this signalization. It led in call and the intention, of course, is to have it work the rest of the lead-in call corridor operates and it's true that it's watering the bridge because this is council policies, they've already been enacted. But of course, with new signals will come new sidewalk markings and so forth, which is, this funding is not to build the, the signalization, but to design it. And then also, we have a couple other city council projects, council District 2 projects, and we're taking from a, an existing council District 2 project. I urge your support.
We have a motion and a second for approval of R-249. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, say no. That passes unanimously. Our next item is item B, that's R-261. That is a nuisance dwelling or structure in need of abatement at 553 Dolores Northwest, 87105, within the city limits of Albuquerque. It is so ruined, damaged and dilapidated as to be a menace to the public comfort, health, peace and safety, and that is required to be removed. I move a do-pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have one individual signed up to speak, and then we will go to Ms. Angelo to basically talk about this. And Paul, welcome.
Hello.
Go and proceed.
Hello, Mr. President, Counselors. My name is Paul Chavez. This is Les. I'm the owner of the property on Dolores. I just purchased it on 12/14. We're in the process of bringing everything up to code. We've already started on it. I project approximately 30 days, maybe a little more depending on permitting. We've already gotten a permit for the property to bring everything to code, as from the plumbing, electrical, the whole house, and that's where we sit right now.
Thank you. Mr.?
I was just going, I think you're probably going to do the same thing, ask the planning department to come in and respond to see how the owners are working with you guys.
Ms. Metzger, go and proceed.
Thank you. President Sanchez, Counselors, Angelo Metzger with Safe City Strike Force, and this is a property that has been posted substandard about three and a half years now. There is a new owner involved. Like he stated, he purchased the property about, they closed about mid-December. Since then, I was out there today, they do have a new roof installed and they are progressing with getting the remodel completed. I would recommend a 30-day deferral on this one to give them time to kind of either finish or at least keep progressing and we can revisit it at that time.
Thank you, Counselor Penya.
This question is irrelevant, but is it going to be your personal home or is it an investment property?
It's an investment property, Counselor.
Okay, thank you.
I will then, based on the recommendation of Mr. Metzger, move for a 30-day deferral. And if you need more time, you can always come back in 30 days and we can grant additional time. But this property has been a nuisance to that community for over 14 years, and we're just pleased to see that somebody's, you know, made the investment in wanting to fix that property up.
Yes, Mr. President, the house is going to be a remarkable house and we're starting to look forward to completing it and showing you pictures or whatever maybe soon. It will be nice.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a 30-day deferral until February the 5th. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed? That carries unanimously. And basically, the same property is on two different addresses, so we've got a, this is R-262. It's a nuisance dwelling or structure in need of abatement at 557 Dolores Northwest and you met, 87105, within the city limits of Albuquerque. It is so ruined, damaged and dilapidated as to be a menace to the public comfort, health, peace and safety, and that it will be required to be removed. I move a do-pass.
Second.
And I also move a deferral until February 5th. That'd be for 30 days. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a 30-day deferral. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed? That carries unanimously. If there is no further business before this council, this council is adjourned.